Good evening and welcome to the October 21st regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting. At this point, if everybody could take a second and turn off your cell phones and then stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, first order of business, Secretary Baker, will you please take attendance?
Yes. President Singer here, Vice President McFarland is absent, Secretary Baker here, Treasurer Fridell.
Here.
Member Blasey.
Here.
Member Lotterbach.
Here.
And Member Roush is absent.
Great, thank you. All right, we will move into item two, which is the Consent Agenda. Are there any items that anyone would like removed from the Consent Agenda and discussed independently?
I'd like 2.4 removed from the Consent Agenda, please.
Okay, item 2.4, we'll move that to, let's see, let's move that to 3.7.
So that's everything under 2.4?
2.4.
Or just a particular item?
2.4.
The whole thing?
Yeah.
So that's approval of the payment of the school system, all right. Anything else? All right, seeing none, we, I'll entertain a motion for items 2.1, which is approval of the meeting minutes, 2.2, which is recommendations for employment, 2.3, which is announcements of resignations, and item 2.5, which is approval of the authorization of legal payments.
I make the motion that we accept the Consent Agenda, 2.1, 2.2, 2.3, and 2.5.
Moved by Fridell, support by Lotterbach, and all those in favor of accepting the Consent Agenda, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, and it moves unanimously. Okay, we'll go into item three, which is Board of Education Matters. Item 3.1 is shining stars, now I'll turn it over to Mr. Scharrow for this.
Our first shining star tonight is the mother of our own, Jankowski, Marana Jankowski. Marana will join me. Marana comes up, I'll reorder about Marana, she's single. Marana joined the MPS team in December 2008 as a paraprofessional at Woodcrest Elementary School. Her entire 11-year MPS career has been spent working with woodcraft, wool rings. Mrs. Jankowski was nominated for the shining star by an MPS parent among their comments were the following: as the parent of kindergarten, this is her first official first day of school. Her son was excited but nervous for the new school experience. As we were dropping him off in the classroom, he started to get overwhelmed and cried. Took him out of the room to help him calm down. Mrs. Jankowski came right out of the classroom to help confront him and talk him through his emotions. As a mom, this was amazing to see and reassured that even though the drop-off was rough, he was in good, rolling hands at Woodcrest over the next week of school. My son reported about various things that had been, but there has been a consistent story about Mrs. Jay each day. She is an even in this classroom, but he admitted to a point to check in and have lunch and recess and everything. He has come to the line of a hug from her to get through the day. I am so thankful that she has been a part of the transition to elementary school.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Our second shining star is Mary Sandborn. Mary would come join me. We'll read a little bit about Mary as she comes up. Mary's high school alma mater is HH Dow. She graduated from Central Michigan University with a Bachelor's of Science in Education degree in 1987, and her Master's of Art degree in Teaching Elementary from Saginaw Valley State University in 1990. Mary joined the MPS team in 1987 as a kindergarten teacher and moved to Seibert Elementary in 2012. Mary received her first MPS shining star in January of 2017, and now she's back for a second. Mrs. Sandborn was nominated for the shining star by an MPS parent. Among their comments were the following: Mrs. Sandborn is an exceptional employee and teacher to our children. She has a great approach and tactics toward all students. With her grace and professionalism, she has maintained a high level of engagement and happiness among the students. Mary has more than exceeded my expectation for my son's first year in school. Mary has been very well received by him. He loves going to school, and she set the kids to be independent with confidence. I've been blown away with the reading skills and math in particular. The concerns I have had, she has handled professionally while being reasonable at the same time. I couldn't have asked for a better kindergarten teacher. Congratulations, Mary.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
And now we'll move into item 3.2. We have a presentation on social-emotional learning. Would you like to introduce our speakers?
We're going to turn right over to Mr. Schrow. Awesome. Good evening, I have several friends with me here tonight. I have Kristi Hayenstock, who was a school psychologist for us at Seibert last year, now is transitioning to a district role. We have Jackie Warner, who is our friend from Community Mental Health, and then we have Tracy Eckers, a fifth grade teacher. So I think it's going to start with Jackie.
Great, thanks.
So we want to talk a little bit about social-emotional learning at Midland Public, but specifically featuring Seibert Elementary. And so I get to kind of intro some of the exciting things, but we'll talk about all that we have done. So some statistics, what we know, one out of every five school-aged children are impacted by mental health issues, anxiety, depression, things like that. 20% of school-aged children never receive treatment, that's a worry. 30 to 50% of teens will experience mental health issues before adulthood, and then this last part, around 1,400 students with mental health needs and only 280 receive treatment. So what we need to look at is what can we do to get to all the rest of the people? So here are some things we know, some of this is kind of small, if you can, if you can't read it, we can get to the PowerPoint. With SEL programming, it can have a positive impact up to 18 years later on academics, conduct, emotional distress, and drug use, which is something our community needs to continue to battle. 57% more students that are in schools that receive SEL programming have improved skills than those of the schools without SEL programming. 27%, excuse me, have more improved academic performance, and 24% have more improved emotional well-being and social behavior, the things that teachers are looking for in their classrooms. In a 2015 national study, they published in the American Journal of Public Health, there was a statistically significant association between SEL skills in kindergarten and key outcomes for young adults later. A lot of times we talk to teachers and we say, what would be something you'd want to see in your students? They definitely want to see academics, but they want to see these adult skills, things that they could do to be a successful adult. And so SEL decreased the likelihood of living in or being on a waitlist for housing assistance, police involvement before adulthood, or ever spending time in detention. On the Castle website, the average return and investment for every six evidence-based programs is 11 to 1. So this is pretty exciting. Every dollar invested, there is an $11 return, so savings from costs not incurred from an intervention. And there's also an adult benefit to this. They work more effectively with challenging students, and one of the main causes of burnout is the challenging students. And so when we're getting these skills to the kids to not have as challenging behaviors, and to the adults to kind of know how to deal with it, it's a win-win for all. And then we talk about the whole child, to be able to teach and build all the way academic behavior and social-emotional. Just as we teach our children all the academic skills to be college and career-ready, we need to teach the social-emotional and behavioral skills to be successful to get into college and be ready for that. The explicitity of teaching these skills is associated with higher self-esteem, more positive and respectful peer and adult interactions, less emotional distress, fewer problem behaviors, and improved academic performance. So kind of touching on each one of those things and how important that is. Recent legislative and educational initiatives related to seclusion and restraint and restorative justice, these reiterate the need and demands for universal emotional and behavioral and health supports. And so we want to be able to, I mean, this is kind of the background of why we wanted to make sure we got social-emotional learning into our buildings, and then kind of go forward with a few other things in here from our building.
So SEL, social-emotional learning, what is that? By definition, social-emotional learning is the process through which children and adults acquire and effectively apply the knowledge, attitudes, and skills necessary to understand and manage emotions, set and achieve positive goals, feel and show empathy, establish and maintain positive relationships, and make responsible decisions. When we're talking about SEL, we're generally talking about skills and competencies in five general areas. And those five areas are self-awareness, like knowing what we're good at and what we need to work on, self-management, being able to stay in control and persevere through challenges, social awareness, understanding and empathizing with others, relationship skills, and responsible decision-making. SEL competencies are not developed in a vacuum. So although we are, as a school district, wrapping our minds around SEL and what this looks like in our schools, we know that it's not just us here in schools, it's not just teachers, it's not just service providers, it's not just parents or students, it's everybody. SEL skills are not developed in a vacuum, but rather through the experiences that students have in classrooms throughout the school, in their homes, and in the communities. What do we know doesn't work with regards to SEL? The same that we know about math and reading. It's not a one-stop, it's not an assembly, it's not a guest speaker. We can't just bring something in, or someone in, or some program in, deliver it, and assume that our kids learn and have these skills. We can't teach math overnight, we can't teach math with an assembly, we can't teach reading with an assembly. The same is true with social-emotional learning. We have to infuse it every day in all of our teaching, in all of our instruction, in all of our curriculum, with all of our people, the adults and the kids alike. Because, just like we wouldn't be able to teach math or reading if we didn't know our math and reading, we have to be able to show those same skills to our kids, if that's what we're trying to teach and reinforce. So school-wide, SEL is a systematic approach to infusing social-emotional learning into every part of a student's educational experience across all classrooms, during all parts of the school day, out of school, in partnership with family and communities. This approach provides a learning environment that integrates SEL into all aspects of instruction and promotes equitable outcomes for all students. All right, so with SEL, SEL fosters and depends upon this equitable learning environment. All young people and adults feel respected, valued, affirmed in their individual interests, talents, strengths, backgrounds, values. We know with that, within our schools, in order to deliver this instruction, we have to have a school culture that promotes belongingness, connectedness. So for example, approaches and strategies that have, and continue to be, coin trauma-informed, are great first steps, is we want to set the stage in our building for building positive relationships. We need more Mrs. Jays. We need that every day, all day, because that's when our students are going to foster and learn these skills, when they're in a setting where they have positive relationships, where they feel connected, where they want to be. That is the stage we need to teach SEL. So connected is safety, belonging. Castle, Jackie mentioned Castle, but that is a nationwide, a national-level organization for SEL that promotes SEL, fosters that, does a lot of research in the area. They say that because student learning is influenced by interactions across all settings, promoting student SEL requires thoughtful coordination across school, community, and homes. All right, so we know this, right? And I was in front of this group two years ago, talking about, okay, we're going to do this, right? And it's a great idea, but of course, when you start to think about how we're going to roadmap this and what this is going to look like, it becomes more challenging. But we have, over the last two years, roadmailed this. And that was done through a pilot in two buildings, Seibert Elementary and Midland High, and we're going to really focus on Seibert today. But in the spring of 2018, Seibert and Midland High were identified as these pilot schools for SEL efforts. In the summer of 2018, lead teams of staff from those buildings were identified. And through the summer of 2018, and into summer of this year, summer 2019, those teams worked with a consultant from CMU. Dr. Stephanie Frederick at CMU had been instrumental in Illinois, in a district in Illinois, as their school psychologist. Illinois has kind of led the charge in terms of states at the forefront of SEL programming, and she was very involved in her school district in Illinois, developing this and rolling it out. So she consulted with the two schools in Midland Public Schools, as well as a few others within Midland County. But the team at Seibert consists of, consisted of, and continues to consist of Paul, representatives from the teaching groups at several of the levels, kindergarten, second, third, and fifth, the PYP coordinator, myself, and Jennifer Williamson, a psychologist and social worker, and Jackie Warner, Youth Intervention Specialist. So this is a great time, I'm going to turn it over to Paul.
Yeah. What button were you hitting? Great. So where the rubber meets the road is where we started to think about how would it impact the students? Because if it doesn't impact the students, we might as well not do it. So we wanted to take a look at what was happening in our building, and so we took a look at all the standards. Dr. Frederick was instrumental in setting up this slide, and there's about, I don't know, 18 pages of this, where we took a look at every standard, every grade, in those areas, and looked at what we were already doing. And then that also then opens up opportunities for us to look to do some new things. So the unpacking of the social-emotional learning competencies was done with the leadership group. So all those folks are on the, yes, all the folks are on the Seibert team, and then they went back to the building and they started talking about this. And I think we built some excitement because we started to try some things on. It wasn't enough to just talk about the competencies, and the theory is awesome, and both Jackie and Kristi did a fantastic job of talking about it. And I love the theory, but not as much as I love the next few slides. And Tracy and I get to share those with you. So as we started trying these things on, we started to talk about how we could use social-emotional learning opportunities in the morning meetings that are happening in all of our classrooms. Just this year, we have a group of staff that are doing what are called kindness ninjas, and I'll just call through these, and then we have some slides, it'll take a look at each of them individually. We have a peer-to-peer, two peer-to-peer groups that have begun. We have a before-school time of prayer for staff on Wednesday mornings. We have the sprinkle of kindness, which will, it's a donut-related, yes, fun group. I have a shirt. And then taking a look at this restorative practice and these restorative circles, and how we can infuse that at the building level, certainly in my capacity, when I talk to children about behaviors that we would like to avoid, or that I would like for them not to repeat. The restorative practices are an important aspect to that, and so there's some key components to that, that we are going to take and place, overlay our reporting system for behavior interventions. Putting the Eye in Kind is the booklet that was passed around. That was just one example from one classroom, and the teacher brought it to me like, I think it was Friday, I said, oh, I got to have this for today. So some of the students were not maybe so happy about putting the eye in kind, but they found the eye in kind, which I thought was really amazing. And then the mindfulness training that we have been fortunate to receive at Seibert, just about every staff member in every classroom at every grade level has some training, and Amy Phoenix has been instrumental in that, volunteering her time, and I just reached out a couple weeks ago, and we're going to talk about the maintenance for that, and how that can continue to support the emotional needs and the learning of our students. Ah, morning meeting, I think it's time for Tracy. I'll stay up here with you.
Okay. Put this here then. Hi, Tracy, and these are my fifth graders presently this year, and I think it's important to know as well, when we were unpacking those standards for SEL, that they really tied into the primary years program that we do here at MPS. And it went so well hand-to-hand, it just fit really well. And going through those and unpacking them, we also noticed that there's a lot of things that are going on that are right already, and that was really great to see. And then there was a lot of ideas that were thrown around and talked about and shared, and that was great as well. But one of the great things about PYP and about the SEL is the morning meeting idea, and I'm here to talk to you about that today. I've used morning meeting for the past couple years in my classroom, and it's been a game-changer. There's kind of four main areas, and the students are eager to do this every day. We have a morning greeting, and it connects us to the students, the teacher to the student, it connects the students to the students, it teaches them how to look at somebody in the eye and say, hi, how are you doing? And it gives that connection as we are a family in our classroom. We have a sharing time where I might ask a silly question to the kids, or I might ask a more serious question, what do you want to be when you grow up? And I've had kids say, Mrs. Eckers, why do you want us to decide this now? It's making those decisions and thinking about the future and thinking about where your goals are. And they really, they're used to the questions now and used to the challenges, and they do like that. We also weave in our mindful journal in the morning as well, and picking questions about what makes you special. It's okay to be special. What makes you proud about yourself? How can you do something nice for someone else? And some of these topics, even in fifth grade, are foreign to them. We had a topic one day on writing a note to a former teacher, just because. And so they picked a teacher, and they wrote a note, and said something nice, and their goal was to go and watch the teacher and watch for their reaction to this note. And they were like, I think I made her cry, it was great! It was great! But they saw that doing something nice, they didn't have to get an award for it. It was the, wait, you can do something nice just to be nice and show kindness. We have group activities almost every morning where we play a game, where they need to work together to accomplish something. It could be a quiet game, it could be a game that we hop outside and play for about 15 minutes, just to bring the group together so that they can work together. And there's also a morning message that we have, and that involves kind of a mini lesson, and that brings us to something we're doing in the afternoon or later in the morning, and then kind of, okay, we've got the day, let's go, building those emotions up. One thing that did come out of my class, writing those little notes, is what my students now call kindness Friday. And this is their idea, so I've let them run with it. But every Friday, they decided they want to show someone in the school that they are special, and that they are a big deal, and that my students are thankful for them. So the first week we did it, they picked the lunch ladies, and we gave them a poster, and it said, you're a big dill. So they put notes in it, and you know, they thought that was great. And then last week, it was the office staff and Mr. Schrow, and you know, they were the highlighters of our life. So you know, to have fun with it, but they're so proud to be able to go and show love and show kindness to others.
Great. So maybe just stepping back into that theory part, remember, we talked about the academic success that you can longitudinally lay students who have had the social-emotional training and experiences, K through 12. You can lay that next to students who have not had it, and they are outcompeted, they are outscored by about double digits by the time that they end their education. We've been talking for years and years about the attributes for success and avoiding those high-risk behaviors, and everything seems to be gelling at this time. And I'm really proud of my staff to jump on board and to talk about the things that they're trying on, and there's things we haven't, our brains haven't invented yet. So I'll talk a little bit about the kindness ninjas. So again, staff members will show up, it could be a candy bar, it could be a note. We had a gentleman who came in the building and wanted to talk to these two young men one morning because they're on safety patrol, and every day that he goes by, they say hello to him and wave to him. And so it's just an example of how kindness and gratitude can really affect people, and in a very positive way. The two budding peer-to-peer programs right now are between Nicole Roush's fifth-grade class and our ESA program, our Building ESA Program, so those students are spending some time together at lunch, and developing friendships, true friendships. And it's around play and interacting and various activities that are planned. And then Abby Golvas, who is now Abby Gravetti, and Carolyn Fleese, who is, so Gravetti, they're both speech paths for our building in second grade, are focusing on a collaboration that'll give students in second grade a glimpse and some experiences of what autism is for their learning. And then the peer-to-peer approach is going to lean in onto the interpersonal relationships that seem to start sparking around second grade, where they begin to notice the differences of one another, and so they can embrace those differences. Here's the donut sprinkle kindness, and so fourth grade right now, I'll have T-shirts, and I have a T-shirt, and I think there's some other T-shirts probably floating around. We have some happiness coins, and I think it's early November is World Kindness Day, and so we have about 600 coins right now that fourth and fifth graders are making in art, and they will be fired, and they'll, I think each student in fourth or fifth made two or three or four, one to keep for themselves, one to give away. The behavior intervention that I had mentioned, so this is kind of the office function for when students are not regulated in their behavior. We really want to take a strong look at the restorative conferencing and make that, and show that commitment to the conflict resolution that is safe and leads to a positive result. And so the restitution is the agreement as to what should happen. It could be a simple apology, it could be that you're going to change your behavior and do some things differently for a while, and so those restitution things are going to be a part of that. Oh, the Putting the Eye in Kind, which you saw a booklet of, so this was day one for us. So we have Officer Klein, we have our building manager, we have a kindergartner, and a second grader, and two kindergartners and a second grader. And so we've been having a lot of fun with that, and so I want to thank Cindy, I want to thank Penny or Cindy, they're pointing at each other, for the poster because it's a big hit. Connecting the MPS vision statement and the hashtag Keep It Kind. So we proudly display our inclusion and diversity. So we have Officer Klein, we have our building manager, we have kindergarten and a second grader and two kindergartners and a second grader. And so we've been having a lot of fun with that. And so I want to thank Cindy, I want to thank Penny or Cindy, they're pointing at each other for the poster because it's a big hit. Connecting the MPS vision statement and the hashtag keep it kind. So we proudly display our inclusion and diversity mission statement and we are committed to that. So you can see it throughout the building and I put it on Twitter every chance I get. Students are talking about how they're kind. They come and share with me in the morning and the announcements, what, how they feel they put the Eye in Kind. They are taking pictures and they're doing journal writing and it really is, if it's infused by all staff, then it will, the benefits will be reaped by the entire staff. And so we're celebrating cultures there. That's the picture of our display case along with the mission statement. So we're looking at celebrations that happen in cultures in October, November, and December. And then we're recognizing those and talking about them in announcements. And so the students are learning a little bit about them and they can also then join in the celebration. All right, I think that brings us to the end of our formal presentation, but we'll all step back up and if you have questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Great, thank you. Does anyone have comments or questions?
I, I think it's wonderful. I guess my question, and I don't really know who to direct to that, but it seems like we should have this type of program in all of our elementary buildings. And I don't know what it costs to get it started and the training involved, but it seems if it's benefiting students that much and you can see the, the need for that linking in order for all students to be able to learn up to their ability. So I guess that would be my thought.
Sure, thank you, Mary. I think that the PYP framework that we have is already promoting many of these attributes. And so I'll just throw that out there that I think it is in place in a lot of ways in a lot of buildings. We just are formalizing it and we're committing to it in a way so that we can come and show you, you know, a fancy presentation and we're going to go back and we're going to build on this, so.
Mary, we created a couple of new positions this year. Kristi is a key role in this, so she'll be moving once we can figure out how to backfill her to do, to lead some of these things too.
Awesome, awesome.
I would just like to say thank you for your enthusiasm and, and all the time and effort you're putting in this because just the statistics you shared at the beginning are amazing because we all know that what you do when they're young makes a big difference when they're older, not only for their success, but really for society. And you're setting them up for a positive future. So it'd be interesting to see how it all goes.
The thing I would like to add is, number one, I love when you start and, and you talk about why this is important and all the research that backs up why it's so important. And then to, to share with us the collaboration that has taken place in your building. And for so many years when, when I grew up in education and, and our older kids did, there was more silo work. And I feel like these days we're breaking the silos and there's just a lot more working together. And you're talking about how to bring kindness in a building and it's not just a fifth grade teacher that's doing it. It's an office staff too, and, and it's everybody that, that's taken a part of that and how important it is to really reach out to our community and, and take advantage of all those skills that we have and everybody embraces. So I appreciate that. I am wondering about all those metrics and if you're seeing, what you're seeing so far. And I would think it would be over time, we would see, we want to, would want to look over time and, and see the impact, but is there anything that you're seeing right now?
Well, thanks Pam. I think that there's some embargo data that I, I think has some merit to it and it is early. And so I don't know that what's happening at Seibert isn't happening at some other buildings. I think there are some things that, like you had said, that are in silos, where we're connecting those silos, right? So we're weaving it together where, and, and if we're going to do it, then I think any building can do it. So I think more to come on that. So maybe we'll come back into another.
What policy's embargoed data at the state assessment results aren't to be released yet, but we know them. And so he's a little reluctant to break that.
That's good, that's good. He's doing his job.
But it's encouraging.
I think that, you know, any teachers in, in the district that, that see things that are happening and can share, the more we can share one building to another, things that are positive and it working, just in an email or in your, in your newsletter will be helpful.
I, I think it's important to realize too, it's not a one, one and done or it's not just a kind thing to do or a nice thing to do. It's evidence-based and it's, it's intentional. And there's been a lot of people getting together to really create an environment that kids and staff and everyone can thrive in. And I think that's what is really magical about this. So I appreciate all your help.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, we'll move on to item 3.3, which is for action. We have our Series One bond audit, audit. Brian.
Yeah, thank you. A couple of meetings back, you guys heard from Dave Youngstrom. He brought to you two audits. He brought to you our main audit of our primary general fund and also our special revenue accounts and also our single, our single audit, which represented the finances behind our food service account. At the end of August, we had Yo and Yo come in and complete an audit of our Series One bonds. And that represented a look really at three areas amongst our bond spending from the 2015 period through August of 28. First area was looking at our practices internally compared to the current government accounting standards. Second, it took a look at our internal controls via procurement, payment, et cetera. And also three, our accuracy in reporting on our finances related to the bond as well too. We did include that bond report to you all. From a very high-level perspective, I think there's three statements within that bond that point out what they thought from us. On page one, it points out in an opinion, and I'll read from it. It says, "In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects the financial position of the 2015 school building and site bond Series One of the Midland Public Schools." That means that what we told them, they have fact-checked and they believe that to be accurate. If you would look on the back of that page, page two, they also said in their opinion, the supplementary information as identified in the table was also fairly stated, which reiterates what we said in number one. And I think the most impactful statement from all of this would have been found on page seven. And this is what you as a board really want to hold us accountable for from a financial end, where it says, and I quote from the audit, "During our audit, we did not identify any deficiencies in internal control that we consider to be material weaknesses." And that's the statement that we really looked for and that you as a board would like to hear from your auditor as well too. So in layman's terms, this was a clean audit that we got from Yo and Yo from our Series One bond. There is just a few amount of dollars that are left that are coming to the end of it, but it was substantially complete, which is why it was the proper timing to complete this audit. So tonight we presented to you for your acceptance of this bond audit.
Great, thank you, Brian.
You're welcome.
At this time, I'll accept a motion to accept the Series One bond audit.
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Friddell, support by Lauterbach. At this time, we'll open it up for discussion, any discussion. Oh, it was cut and dried. Great presentation in our finance, FFO meeting as well. And the report looked great and I appreciate your summary as well.
And always credit due to our business office and the very hard work that they put into it.
Absolutely.
Thank you. At this time, we'll move into a vote. All in favor of approving the item 3.3, which is approval of the Series One bond audit. Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. And it passes unanimously. We move into item 3.4, which is also for action. It's a resolution to amend board policy to change the duration of board member terms. I had been involved in MASB training several times and it was brought to our attention and others that if we have board terms that are six years in length as opposed to four and we, we can set them up such that we wouldn't ever have four board members at one time that would be up for election, which for districts can cause a lot of uneasiness and issues if you say would have four brand-new board members that would come on to the board. So what this is, is it's a resolution to amend board policy to change the duration of the board member terms. At this time, I would accept a motion to approve the resolution to amend board policy to change the duration of board member terms.
So moved.
And support.
Moved by Lauterbach, support by Friddell, and we'll open it up for discussion.
How many other districts have adopted this format?
I don't have that answer. I would have to look into that.
I would say just off the top of my head, the majority probably have read. It started about, well, I was still in Algonquin, so it was seven, eight years ago they began to adjust their terms. And part of it was to change to the January board seating where it used to be July 1. Part of it was the November election. If you recall, we got moved off of school elections to November elections and even years. And then the, trying to figure out seats so you never lost a majority of a board at one time was what many districts went to. So just off the top of my head, I would say majority. I don't know what that number would be.
And in training, when, when I went to training classes, this oftentimes came up and it seemed just a straw boat kind of thing that most, most of the districts that were represented there were with six-year, six-year terms.
When I first came here, I mentioned it to Jerry Wasserman and then the president that I hadn't seen a board that really hadn't moved yet and was there a reason? He really didn't have a rationale, but he did say a six-year commitment is a, is a longer commitment and sometimes people aren't up to that, so.
That was my next question. With those other districts that have made that change, that must limit the pool. I mean, it's a 50% increase of the commitment. And I don't know if they've had any issues in filling those seats or having enough candidates that are interested because a six-year commitment is.
And I'm not sure if anyone did any, pulled any data on that or if they did. They hadn't shared that, so I'm not sure what the answer to that question would be.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know either. I think you probably see, just again, off the top of my head, people running for one time or maybe two. I mean, if you think the average length of what you, most people volunteer for this, it's about that time period.
Right. And then there's Lynn.
And there's others. I mean, there's others. When I was at Algonquin, I had four, five board members who had 20 years or more, so you know.
Just kidding.
There are places where they do go longer, but it's, you know, typically, there are some four years and out, but there's not many. And I would say it's probably, if I had to average it, I have probably somewhere in that six to eight term. So it fits maybe at least the one time. But yeah, you may be right, I don't know.
Are there any other elected positions that go on a six-year term?
Judges.
Judges. Kind of thought that, but it's a loaded question.
Yep.
Okay.
I would just comment that in the experience, to me personally, it takes a couple of years just to kind of get your feet wet. And so I think that the second two years just goes by really quick. So I could see where there's advantages to the six years.
And again, like I said, it was years ago, they did a school election every year in May and it was two, two, three. And then the state saw the bill to stop running multiple elections and syncing them up. And so, boy, I'm starting to lose how many years I've been doing this. But it was around when I became a superintendent, so 14 years ago, they moved us into November. That began to drive a lot of changes. Organizational meetings would switch to, to January. Board members began to get seated in January. Then, then the idea of, oh my gosh, we could have a lot of people up, up for election at the same time. That's what drove it in the beginning.
I think too, looking at, at, like Lynn said, getting your feet wet, but also taking time to do that training and be ready and understand what your role is more specifically is important too. And if you have to have several new members coming out at the same time and, and, you know, trying to get them up to speed with what the responsibility is, it might be difficult.
Any other discussion, questions?
So the only conflict, not conflict, but the only challenge, I guess, would be for November of 2020. How do we, so you have candidates that are going to specifically say what they are interested in.
That's right. You would have to identify which position you are running, which seat you are running for.
So on that ballot, Brad, you would have, and it's the way it used to be, you would see a lot of ballots. And also if you have somebody resigning, you're running for the four-year seat or the six-year, you have to declare.
I think that's enumerated in, in the document, is that not right?
Yes, yes. Exhibit A. So November 20th would be two seats for the term of four years and two seats for the term of six years.
Yes.
And then after that, it would be.
Where would the incumbent, I mean, we're going to have some incumbents in 2020. Where would they be slotted, in the four-year or the six-year?
They would have to decide.
They would get to decide.
They would get to decide.
Your choice.
Okay. So that'd be.
No advantage to anyone here.
Potential or new candidate, I mean challengers.
Sure.
And incumbents would both choose which.
Sure, absolutely.
What if nobody chose, chose four-year?
What if nobody chose six?
It doesn't happen much, but if you ever had, it has precedent, the board, it's like filling a seat. You would then post, interview, fill a seat.
Ah, got it.
All right, if there's no more discussion, then we can move into a vote. All those in favor of approving the resolution to amend board policy to change the duration of board members' terms, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay, and it passes unanimously. We'll move into item 3.5, which again is for action. We have district property and casualty insurance renewal. Mr. Bruton.
Yeah, thank you. Tonight, we bring to you a renewal of our insurance coverage. Typically, this is a November renewal, but because of how the calendar falls, our current policy would expire before the November board meeting, meaning we need to move it up a month to make sure that we still have our coverage. The coverage that we bring to you this evening has no substantial variances from previous coverages that we had. We did see a slight increase due to three factors that we have researched. One is typical inflation indices. Two would be a increase in our property values. The property insured values last year were roughly 240,338,000. And this year, because of the completion of additions to our schools coming on, those are now valued at 247,450,000 approximately. The coverage within our property insurance had the highest increase in the premium. And then also our claims history as well too had a bit of a contribution to that. We did discuss with our committee and will be discussing further with FFO, that with the substantial completion of many of our bond projects, it's probably time for us to move to an open bid in the future now that we've become more stable with our property construction projects as well too. But for the interim, we do ask tonight that you would approve a continuation of this policy. Again, with our current policy expiring on November the 17th. And our premium for this year would be 245,812 covering us for one year from November.
Got it, thank you.
Thank you.
So at this time, I'd entertain a motion.
I move that we renew the insurance coverage in the amount of 245,812 with Ider.
Moved by Friddell, support by Baker, and we'll open it for discussion.
What a lengthy document. What I, you know, I didn't realize how much detail goes into creating that policy and all the things you have to look at. I was just amazed.
There, there really is a lot of, being new to it this year for the first time, a lot of backend work reading through policies, but also there's a lot of credit due to our business office and also an unsung hero of Tracy Reed as well too. Each and every single driver, each and every single VIN number for each and every single vehicle that we have. And then also cross-referencing that with our current property values and those and even working with our construction manager on anticipation dates of removal of properties and making sure that we're insuring those for the right values as well too versus content and vacant liability. So there is months of work that go into the presentation of this. And we do appreciate Ider's work to put this together one month earlier. We kind of sprung it out and once I saw the calendar dates and said, hey, we thought we had two months, we have one, let's get moving. And we appreciate their work on that.
Can I ask a question? On the law enforcement coverage, is that for the SROs?
That's correct. And that's increased this year.
So are, does the, does the city and county also, are they covered under both ours and theirs?
Yes, sir.
City in our case.
City in our case, right. When did we last bid this policy out?
Three back.
Three.
Three.
And we stopped, Brad, we don't always do it every year for the work.
Oh, right.
Also, it was, we kind of stopped with the rationale. We were doing so much construction adding, it was a moving target. We have that. Wrote to you on Friday a little bit about some other people approached us about helping us, looking at that and, and when we rebid doing. an open bid versus a closed bid, which allows you to get more orange to orange bids in the insurance business, you're not always getting the same bid for the same thing, if that makes sense.
So we've increased total assets by?
Seven million.
Seven million.
Approximately.
Okay. So how does the price vary from our last renewal? Obviously, it had to go up. We have more assets.
Approximately 10%.
10%?
Yes, 222,133 last policy, this policy, 245,812.
The larger that being the buildings, but we did have.
Almost $20,000 in property.
Right.
Yes.
Inflation. Then we did have claims, though. But actually, we were pleasantly surprised with the claims that we had, that it wasn't larger. Press box, the suit claim.
New buses and new cars?
Correct. Yeah.
Just under $3,000 in increases in business auto, and our umbrella went up approx, well, a little bit less than 2,000.
Has anything been adjusted, or do we need to fine tune any language because of the loss of the press box to, is there anything that?
More value.
Fits more value and or?
The increased value of the press box was included into that property value increase that you saw. The only other substantial difference in coverage from last policy to this was an increase in our school resource officer line because we expanded from two to four.
I think if I'm wrong, Brian, we did some dropping off of Franklin, State Street, and East Lawn.
We did. We took those down to vacant building coverage, liability, coverage on those as well.
Because Franklin and East Lawn should be down.
The last addition of, yeah, the last addition of real property value that you're going to have is the addition of Adams going on next year, going on to the policy. And then any substantial stadium renovations, it shouldn't affect it huge, but it will have a variance when you're putting new pieces on.
Some new stuff.
Also, whatever we do over at Dow High as well.
No.
Yep.
But we look, we take a close look at that with our agent, and we go through each and every single property, and we go through a series of questions. And even down to the minute details, one that threw me for a loop this year was drones. We got asked a very lengthy series of questions about drones, and how many do we have, and what do we use them for, and never quite thought of the liability associated with them, but it was an educational moment.
That's what we need to talk about. We resisted doing it at this point, but we're probably going to have to get in. I've asked our state superintendent association to pull other districts who have done it, but the cyber liability, we're getting absolutely told that we need to have this down the road, so.
Right, cyber.
Cyber. So if you get attacked and you lose data, and their school districts have actually been held over ransom, and when they get it, they've actually, the advisors of the insurance, your attorneys, just pay it. The loss of the data would be more severe, so.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
To those of you in business who have data, you better be careful.
Right, right. All right. If there's no more questions, then.
I had one more. In there, it had mentioned in the documentation, potential work on risk management in preparation for the fall 2020 bids.
Yes, sir.
What items or what highlights are we looking at as, looking at our risk management? Is there a specific items that need to be addressed when we go to re-quote this out again?
So it's like a full audit, Brad. I've gone through it before. I don't think we have here, or very extensively I have before when we had SET. And they come in and they look at every area of your operation and see where they can decrease your claim on liability. And the best way to do that is prior to getting in, allowing them in. And so we're bringing it through FFO. We met with a group that wants to help us with that. My suggestion is we do it, be open to them that we're going to bid, because we're a public school district, and we're going to take the best deal. You know, that is, best deal isn't always lost, but it certainly plays a factor in there, right?
Mm-hmm.
And with a lot of local vendors, this is a touchy area for us. But yeah, it's coming in and looking at workman's comp. It's coming in and looking at, are you leaving roofs, are you not locking up properly, your cyber liability, all of those pieces of it. It's a full audit of everything. Brian and the business office will spend hours providing information, and they'll be looking and working with us side by side. That's a generic answer.
Okay. No more questions. We'll move into a vote. So for approval of the renewal of the district property and casualty insurance, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And all opposed, and it passes unanimously. Moving into item 3.6 for action, we have maintenance building roof bid. Mr. Bruton?
Yeah, thank you. As we continuously look to improve upon our own internal physical plan, we're looking for some projects that are urgent. And so one of the areas that we have identified as an urgent need is a new roof upon our MPS Maintenance and Transportation building next door. We know from reports and from our own inspections that it's time for this to be able to be done, and we'd like to be able to use our capital improvement fund to be able to make that replacement. So bids were sought, and we are recommending that we do award the bid to the low bidder, Thomas Brown and Son out of Bay City, Michigan, to provide us with a new roof on that building. This would be a 20-year replacement. And we have done vetting and checking of this company to make sure that their credentials meet our current standards, and we've gotten good reviews back from all those that we've sought credential checks from.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
At this point, I had to entertain a motion.
I move that item 3.6, the bid for a roof replacement be approved in the amount of $239,195.
Support.
Moved by Lauterbach, support by Friddell, and we'll open it for discussion.
Is there any underlying damage that needs to be, would be included in that then, or is it in addition?
It's in addition. So that building, when you were in tough times, it began to show some issues, but the school buildings were prioritized first. And so it has caused some block damage as well. But we can't, you don't fix the block first, fix the roof, and then we'll go into blocks. So that building, my assumption is we'll be actually in the spring, maybe summer with another one for the block repair and paint.
Okay.
And signage over there. If you've driven by it, it's time to bring it up, so.
Yep. I think everybody will like that.
Yeah.
Yep.
What kind of roof? I don't even know the building.
Firestone. Don't hold me, but I'm pretty sure it's firestone, even though we preferred Duralast.
Duralast was the alternate bid, but when it came to what the underlying damage was currently versus what Duralast would do to the new materials, then the experts said that we should go with what the bid is for.
We've had, we've got a combination in the district of those, too, it seems like.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. If there's no more questions, then we'll move into a vote. All in favor of approving the maintenance building roof bid for $239,195, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, and it passes unanimously. And we move into item 3.7, approval of the payment of the school system bills for the month of July and August. And this is just discussion at this, no, this would be approval, correct?
Yep.
Approval.
Second first.
So at this time, I would accept a motion to approve the payment of the school system bills for the month of July and August.
I move that we approve the payment of the school bills for the months of July and August of 2019. Do I need an amount?
Moved by Friddell, support by Lauterbach, and we'll open it up for discussion.
Refresh my memory, Mike, what is our limit of, we don't need to have competitive bids with the dollar amount that's set by the state?
Brian, off the top, said better than me, but it changes each year by inflation.
Twenty-four thousand and, somewhere between 24 and 25. I think it's 519, but don't quote me. It's somewhere, and there are changes by CPI every year.
Yep, okay. In this packet, we have two months of purchase orders. We have July and we have August. It's a large dollar amount cumulative between the two of them, just on the POs, is about seven and a half million dollars. So some of them are listed as final and some are listed as open. Just generically, could we get a little bit of explanation on how we handle the opens as they accrue dollars in them, and how we have expenses going against these open purchase orders?
Yep. Not sure I can give that to you, and I'm not sure Brian can or not.
I could do it. I mean, there's a lot of examples within here, but one of them would be with our legal firms. We have open POs for them for the services that we use. And monthly, Cindy will come in to myself, present me the bill from either Les Galbertson or Troon. I'll take a look at it, make sure that those services were actually procured. Mr. Scherr would sign off on those as well. We do a double sign off, and then that gets put in for payment against what that open purchase order line is. It really is an efficiency thing on our end for those vendors that we know that we're going to be using consistently. And that would just be one micro example of how we would do that.
Pay for some supplies. I can't remember.
Yeah, there's a lot of different ones that we do that with.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And how do you come up with those values for those opens?
Typically past practice or anticipated what have been built into our budgets for the school years. When Bob, he used to call it the BOB, the Bob process, the Build Our Budget process, when we build the individual departmental budgets, we do a lot of supposition for the school year to know what that we would be doing department-wise, and what we have built into those budgets really would predicate what we would then use as open line POs. We don't open line POs for more than what we would have budgeted. And we do a review of those when it comes to our budget amendment time. Typically, Brad, that would happen in March, but this year, Mike would like us to do it a little bit earlier because, A, we didn't know what our state aid was until about a month or less than that ago, and also our pupil account numbers are starting to firm up just a little bit. So I think in December, we're going to bring back to you a new budget, kind of a pseudo amended budget, not as in-depth as the March would be. But at that time, we take a relook at where our budget lines are and see if we need to increase or decrease based on what some of our needs and plans were.
What do I close on the variance at the end of the year is doing three instead of two. Districts used to do that when we never had a budget until later. When Governor Snider came in and we knew our budgets, some districts stopped doing three amendments. Doing your checkbook a little more often, to balance your checkbook.
The open, the open PPO, is that like the requirement now that clubs and organizations?
No.
That's different.
Another good example would be diesel fuel. So you don't, you're not going to do a PO every time they need to order, so you do an open against it.
Based on what has happened.
Based on variance with a little bit of, as you know, fuel. It's pretty volatile, so.
Another one would be our company that we use to subcontract employees. We have one through Edge of Staff. We have one through ITH as well, too. Large amount of dollars. We know what we budgeted for subs, and we draw against that. Again, we continuously look in it to see if we see fluctuations and ups and downs, and multiply the look at those.
I think you said a large number of POs. Summertime is big purchasing time, so that may have been the increase that you saw as well.
It is. But in terms of procurement and our 24,000 threshold, anytime that we're going to do material good bids, those come through and make sure that we put them through that way. Our opens usually are service-based. Sometimes it is product like diesel fuel, but usually for the large majority, it's service-based. But there are some outliers.
And actually, service doesn't have a big threshold.
Yeah, the opens for August are pretty small. It's just under 150,000, but the opens in July was 2.6 million, so that was the majority of them.
And that would be correlated to the adoption of the budget and then us reopening for those.
We close it.
Large vendors based on what our budget were.
And everyone's sitting waiting, and then we open up the next budget here in order to close the books.
Yep.
Okay. I don't have specific questions on any of these purchases because there's not a lot of data that follows along with these. There's purchases that are going on here that, as we talked about at our last month's meeting, that a purchase order was approved, and it was considered approved because it went through the consent agenda process. Well, trying to be fiscally responsible, and yes, we are responsible for what's in the consent agenda, which in this case is two months, which is not typical for us. There's a lot of items in here that, a lot of purchases that simply don't have backup on. As an example, the insurance purchase that we have of the 250,000, phenomenal backup. It alleviates almost all questions that we could ever think of or ask because of the detail that's presented. For a lot of the purchases, whether it be service that doesn't have the cap or goods, I would encourage us to try to investigate a different mode or a different method, whether it is more documentation that can be supplied in our pathway through board book of how we get documentation for this, but, or nested items that could be in our documents so that we can review some of those items. And then also, the question that came about for last month, if the board approves a dollar amount for something specifically, and then that changes for whatever reason over the next 30, 60, or 90 days, and it comes forward in the consent agenda with an adjusted amount, I'd like to have a policy or something formal that that's brought to our attention to say, hey, by the way, this purchase order, which issued for a certain amount, something, and I'm not talking about little things like changes in diesel prices or anything like that, but if we're talking about a, something greater than $50,000 change to an existing purchase order that's been through the process of being approved, or if there is a service in here that is just looking to see if we can generate a way for more backup.
We should never have that actually occur, Brad. Once a purchase order that we brought to your level for that amount, we should never spend more than what it is. So I think the last one that was in question, we spent the right amount, but it was in question how the action occurred because of the additions of the signage, right?
Mm-hmm.
So we should never violate a PO that needs your approval on that. So I don't know if you need a policy, because we should never do it and have to bring it to your attention. I mean, if we did, we'd bring your attention saying that there was an error, and we should not have done that. Agree?
Yeah. And, you know, one of the things that I think that we as a business department and finance department strive for is complete transparency in everything that we do, and are happy to provide any backup documentation that you'd like.
Well, that's where I was going to go next.
But these, the, in terms of what we've put on here and in terms of board policy, there is nothing that's within here that would have violated your state threshold of your 24,000 and whatever, again, five something number that that would be. Again, your large open orders usually are your procurement of services. And in most cases, we do bid some of those services, like fuel prices. We did last year go out and bid our fuel prices to make sure that we're getting the most competitive one that's out there. We do vet our sub agencies. We just changed sub agencies a while back as well, too, on our end to make sure that we're procuring the best prices as well, too. But if there's any of these that you ever see that you'd like further backup documentation on, we could provide that for you.
So we never go over the state threshold without breaking you. The open one is a standard practice as well. I've never seen a district who'd not do it in the consent because it's a routine. But also, in consent, you could ask all these questions, even in the consent agenda. You could, when motion approved, and you say, I have questions on three point, whatever, and you can ask all those same ones. So you don't necessarily have to pull it out. Payman, I've had this debate. You don't necessarily have to pull it out for you guys to discuss either and ask these questions. You can also send it to us ahead of time. I had a board member that would call me pretty much soon as the board pack went out, and we would go through purchases all the way through, and vendors that he hadn't seen before. He was pretty used to seeing what type of vendors, you know, what was his purchase. Sometimes I'd have to go, let me go talk to Lori and come get back your answer on that. So I understand you wanting to do your diligence and seeing it, but there isn't, you know, if it's 24,000, you give us the flexibility just for, you know, time reasons to do that, to do that. And then above that, we would bring it to you. We would never violate that amount, so. Details, anything you want, you get it to us. We'll track it down. It's easy. Lori's great at it.
Yeah, we have a phenomenal business department. John and Lori and all of their team will be able to get you whatever you need very quickly.
Okay.
All right. Do you have any other questions?
No. I don't know if there's best practices or if anybody else is doing anything else at a different district, but we have some big dollar amounts, and I would just like to have, like if we feel a little bit more comfortable about some of those approvals without going through it line by line.
I'll do some checking. We have the ability to, if I can sum it up in a question, we have the ability to pull other districts now and see what, how they're doing that. So it's always kind of good to check it. But I'm not aware of anyone doing it any different than the way we do it, so.
Okay.
All right. At this time, if there's no more questions, we will move into a vote to approve item 3.7 of the payment of the school system bills for the months of July and August. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, and it passes unanimously. Item four is request to address the board. No one's officially requested to address the board. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the board? If you could state your name and address, if you're comfortable. If you're not comfortable stating your address, you can write it down and give it to Cindy.
I'm Kalikatancheck. I live at 3411 Valley Drive. I am a representative from Midland High's Green Club. An issue that we've been focusing a lot on recently is food waste. So we've been thinking about two ways to combat that, which is composting and then also donating good food for people to eat. So then this brought up the discussion of what happens to food in the cafeteria. And from what I asked to a lunch lady, she said that any food that's not eaten is usually just thrown out. And wasted food has a huge environmental impact from releasing greenhouse gases, but even more so, it's a human issue because people should be able to eat. Therefore, is there a way that Midland Public Schools can implement some sort of program or at least gather volunteers to get the leftover food from the cafeteria and give that to families in need who can't necessarily afford it?
So it's probably more a question for me than the day to day than them, and I'm not even an expert on this. So what I would like to do is I have Mr. Jaster and our food service director to come visit you, but I can tell you that reusing of the foods because we're, our food comes from the U.S. Department of Education, Egg Altra, and we are not allowed to reuse anything that's been out on the serving line, reheats and those type of things, or food that a student didn't partake in their lunch. So you'll see students throw part of that away that was provided to them. Composting, there may be, but I'm not going to tell you for sure on that. So we'll have somebody reach out to you. It falls under Mr. Jaster's supervision, but he's not an expert there, and so our food service director is, and we can take a look at that. We've had this question raised before and I think there's some blockers in there.
Okay.
But we're glad to have someone meet with you.
Okay. Is that Jackie by any chance?
No. So you're talking to the people out there, and so we have somebody down here who runs our food service called Tina Melzahn.
Okay.
So, and they're a third party contracted through us, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, we'll reach out to you. Maybe he'll come visit you.
Thank you, Mr. Jaster.
Thank you for sticking around. You waited a long time to talk to us tonight.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we will move into item five, which is curriculum instruction and assessment. We have item 5.1, which are the curriculum instruction and assessment minutes.
Yes, Sarah. We met on Tuesday, October 15, here at the Administration Center. We started out with NWEA. Tila Sherman provided an overview of how the Northwest Evaluation Association MAP Growth Assessment is being used at Jefferson. This tool provides teachers with additional information about what a student knows and informs next needs for individual students. There are also uses for the data at the school and district level with regard to the alignment of curriculum and instruction. Plymouth is now using NWEA grades one to five, and all other elementary schools are currently exploring the ideal implementation point for this year. Then we moved on to inclusive and diversity update. The first meeting of the MPS Community and Family Inclusion and Diversity Advisory Team was held on October 9th. The district looks forward to next steps with this team. Many schools are engaged in activities to support inclusion and diversity, and it is wonderful to see students and teachers leading these efforts. The #keepitkind MPS campaign is gaining momentum with many schools sharing how their staff and students are keeping it kind. Book adoptions. At the October Board of Education meeting, five new books will be presented for information. Three books are for middle school, Project 1065, Refuge, and Grenade. Two books are for high school, English 9, Piecing Me Together, and Long Way Down. The committee discussed these books and their use as choice selections for students. Next, we talked about Read by Grade 3. The district hosted parent meetings on October 7th to share information about the new requirement and the potential impact on students. Additional information will continue to be shared through school and district newsletters and communications. And we adjourned at 9:30 a.m., and our next meeting will be on November 26.
Great, thank you. Moving into item 5.2 for information, we have books. Penny, do you have an update on that?
I do. Good evening, everyone. Ms. Baker just read the meeting minutes and she actually cited the books that I have for information for you tonight. As you know, when we present books for information, they're available for the 28-day public review period, and anyone is welcome to stop by here and review a copy of those books. We have three books that will be presented for our middle school English Language Arts courses. As noted in your agenda, all three are historical fiction by the same author, Alan Gratz, all well-respected books that will tie nicely into our curriculum. The first is Project 1065, and this has a copyright of 2016. This will be used in our English VI classes for reading and writing. The second book is Refugee, also by Alan Gratz with a copyright of 2017. This will be used across the spectrum in grade six through eight. And finally, the title Grenade, also by Alan Gratz, copyright 2018, and this will be used in Language Arts or ELA VII. All of these books were vetted and reviewed by our middle school English teachers and our English teacher leader, and lots of support for using these three books. We also have two books that we would bring to your attention for ninth grade English that will be used at both of our high schools. The first one is Long Way Down by Jason Reynolds, and this was copyright 2017. This is actually a free verse poem, very relevant. We will be purchasing 100 copies for each of our schools to be used in a supplemental way as part of a text set so that students have greater choice. The other text, Piecing Me Together, the author is Renee Watson. Similarly, we'll be purchasing 100 copies per school to round out that text selection for ninth grade. These last two books particularly were selected because it does bring freshness to the curriculum, to the novels that we have available, authors who are much more diverse and bring diverse voices into our classroom. So again, those will be available for public review right outside my office here at the Administration Building.
Great, thank you. And then item 5.3 is for information as well. We have the 2019-20 Advisory Board of Instruction in Sex Education and Birth Control.
Yes, it's our requirement to bring this to you annually. Steve Poole is our coordinator for auxiliary programs, leads this charge. The following people have been appointed to this advisory board for this current school year, the 2019-2020 school year. Mr. Scott McFarland is the board's liaison to this committee. Dr. Steve Poole and Reverend Wally Maiton will serve as co-chairs, and we're required to have two co-chairs. In addition to Reverend Maiton and Steve Poole, we have Amy Jaster as a local health professional and parent. We have Michael Donovan as a health teacher here in our district, Marnie Williams as a health teacher and a parent representative. We're required to have students, so we have two students, Owen Joswiak from Midland High School and Evelyn Presnell from Dow High School. Dr. Jeff Newman also serves as a local health professional and parent. And then, as we mentioned before, Mr. McFarland is the board rep and a parent.
Okay, great. Thank you for that update. Moving into item six, which is Finance, Facilities, and Operations, we have 6.1 Committee Minutes. Do you have the committee minutes?
Yes, yes. We met on October 7th, and Mr. Sharo and Mr. Bruton discussed the following topics with the committee. The July-August financials, with no significant variances from prior years, were noted, other than the increase in interest revenues. The summer 2020 bond work scope and bid schedule, the state budget update, the state utilizing the 2X funding formula. MPS will receive $120 increase per student, and categorical additions and reductions were highlighted. The bond audit was presented. MPS receiving that clean audit with no material weaknesses identified. We went over the insurance renewal that we voted on earlier, and also the bids for the maintenance and transportation roof replacement. The next meeting will be Monday, November 4th at 5:00 p.m.
Great, thanks, Mary. Moving into item 6.2 for information, we have gifts. Brian?
Yep, tonight, for information, we're bringing you gifts totaling $14,619.95. This is made up of 20 individual separate donations that range all the way from pre-primary sending books to a donation to help out homeless students with an MPS, and then also $4,000 in the community gives youth service program. And as has been past practice and tradition, we'll recognize each of those 20 individual donors within our broadcast this evening. We do need you to act upon item 6.3. For action tonight, we're asking you to accept a gift of $6,000 from the Midland Area Community Foundation for books for the One Author, One Community Program for fourth through eighth grade students.
Excellent, thank you. At this time, I would entertain a motion for item 6.3, gifts totaling $6,000 from Midland Area Community Foundation.
So moved.
Support? Moved by Lauterbach, support by Baker. Any discussion? A big thank you. Thank you for the generosity and it's great to have a book that the community can interact with the students. Now we'll vote. All in favor of approving acceptance of gifts totaling $6,000 from Midland Area Community Foundation, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
I'm not opposed, I'm aye.
All right, unanimous. Moving to item 6.4 for information, we have a few items.
Yep, tonight, just again for information only, we had a donation of two instruments. One, a trumpet to the MPS music program from John Gontrum, and then also a cello for the Dow High School Music Program from Philip and Christine Hong. We appreciate their generosity.
Absolutely, thank you. Okay, moving into item seven, we have 7.1, Human Resources Study Committee Minutes. John?
Yes, the H.R. Study Committee met on October 10th here at the Administration Center. We, Mr. Sharo, discussed the collective bargaining agreements and possible timelines for future negotiations. He also discussed a trend of school districts designating a communications manager to oversee the growing number of communication channels utilized by students, parents, and community members. And we discussed completing a needs analysis to determine the future state of communications responsibilities. Mr. Kowalski provided recent, an update on a recent pay increase for substitute teachers, and we also reviewed the current substitute usage numbers. Mr. Kowalski also shared a FOIA request that was made to the district with the committee and gave an overview of recent certified staff hires and current position openings. The next H.R. Study Committee meeting is yet to be determined.
Okay, thank you, John. Moving into item 7.2 in memorandum, Mr. Jaster.
Good evening. The board and MPS staff extend their deepest sympathy to the family of Ms. Romeo Dudzik. She passed away on October 2nd, 2019. Ms. Dudzik was the secretary at Carpenter Elementary School for 23 years, and she retired in 1984.
Thank you. Moving to item 8.1, which is for information, letters from the Board of Education. We'll go out to several of our folks that have given us wonderful gifts. Item 8.2, letters to the Board of Education from Chemical City Paper regarding the district's response to HH Dow. Item nine, which is scheduled activities for information. All meetings and regular and special meetings for the Board of Education are identified on the agenda. And item 10 is our study discussion session, so this is where we can hear from board members. Start off with you, Brad.
I wanted to thank all the people for presenting today. That was very fascinating, and like Mary said, I hope that this grows into all of our buildings. This is Spirit Week at our high schools leading up to Friday night's football game. As you heard me communicate earlier today, tickets are on sale at Dow High School prior to the game, and they're also for sale at the game starting at 5 o'clock, I believe. Should be a great contest. Midland High is trying to finish an undefeated season, and Dow High School is coming off a phenomenal win last week over Mount Pleasant High School, which was absolutely awesome. I know the stadium will be filled with high energy, high energy from the community, high energy from the students, everybody that comes to this game, cheerleaders, pom poms, the two bands together, which is a small army. This game will be the 49th time our two high schools have played in the final week of the season, in the infamous Week Nine rivalry game, and I know it's a game that the community looks forward to. But being the 49th consecutive meeting, this will also be the last meeting because next year it will change to a midseason game because of playoff and scheduling complications, so, but I'm looking forward to Friday night's game. I think it should be great for the, everybody involved, and should be a great game and great for the community.
Thanks, Brad. Then?
I just comment that congratulations again to our two shining stars, Mrs. Jay and Mary Sando. It's always nice to honor people that do so many great things behind the scenes that most of us don't know about, so congratulations. And not only is the big football game occurring, but we just received our tickets for an evening of music and more at Jefferson on November 7th, and those are always fun events, as well as Midland High has a Shakespeare play coming up, I believe, the first weekend of November. So there's a lot of other fun things going on, so be sure to check and support our teachers and students. That's it.
And the Spirit Week is also going on in all the elementary buildings and the middle schools as well.
Really? Elementary, wow.
Yeah, they have. They had Colors Day, and they're supposed to decide which color of high schools they're going to wear on the, yeah, it's a big deal. They've got posters up at Central Park, and it's pretty cool. That's all I have.
Okay, John?
I have nothing to add other than what's already been said.
All right, great. The only thing I have to add is I went to the behind the scenes at the Capitol and was able to meet with several other school board representatives from across the state, really looking at improving the state of public education in Michigan. And we're encouraged consistently. I get emails, I get stuff at home to really talk to our board about our annual leadership conference. If you haven't signed up and you can, please do so and take advantage. I'm looking forward to one of their speakers, well, several, but one in particular will be speaking on social emotional topics, and it is Dr. Nick Yoder, and I'm looking forward to see what he has to share with us and see where we're at and how it meshes with what he's telling us as well. I'm interested to hear about numbers on the pre-Labor Day start. I'm curious what our community is saying. And I'm super proud of the hashtag keep it kind, and it's exciting to see the kids putting the i in kind, and I hope that keeps going. So that's all I have.
Halo vape detection devices, we've expanded that from Midland High to Dow High. They've worked extremely well at this point, and so hopefully they become more preventive than catch ya. But as we've talked about, they have future capability of doing a lot more as well, so if it keeps going well, we may expand those to the middle schools. The polling questions, so that doesn't close until the 23rd. I gave you a little update last week, and those numbers have improved slightly to the positive. But as you know, and as I tell you, I predict that it's very split, and we'll do so. We threw a new question on there, as well as this one continues for a few days, about the balanced calendar with some background. It's a little more positive than I thought. I think the background helped the explanation, so maybe we need to revisit also the Labor Day one and explain a little bit. Brian and I were talking today, he was looking at calendars. Next year, Labor Day falls. Next year, Labor Day falls on that almost the latest date it can, and so maybe we need to tell them, you know, hey, next year if we don't do this, it's middle of June when you get out. I'm not sure, I'm not one that week in June or week in August makes that much difference, but it does help for the teachers that many of these assessments are in the spring, and the more front-loaded they are, the better off the students and the teachers are with that time. But the balanced calendar would be my interest, I just didn't think of it.
It was really nice to get the data or the information to hear the why.
Yeah, I hope I didn't throw it one way or the other, and then the first question was our trial, we didn't give a lot of background, so maybe we need to revisit that one. We have lots of questions, we're going to start playing out that way as well, and maybe that increases the communication as well as we go, so pretty neat. As we talked about this year, our Administrative Council, we're going to bring in a lot of different trainings this year, and last week we had Christine Patzvel from Truen doing training on Title IX, so that was very good for all of our staff, particularly some of the younger administrators who have not had that before. Cindy wrote to you a little bit about Dow Chemical and how generous they were with furniture out of the Dow 2040 building before it came down, and so some of our original 1960 furniture, that's 50 years old here, is being replaced in the Administration Center. Dow not only donate the furniture, but they also pay for the moving expenses here. We will have to pick up the tab for the fitting of the furniture in here with space, but it's a small amount compared to what we'll be able to do, so excited to see what that looks like inside the Administration Center. Our second edition of our school's newsletter went out with the Midland Daily News a few weeks ago. Cindy delivered a bunch of those around town this week as well. It had the four-page state of the district in there as well that we've tried to add as we go forward, so hopefully that meets with the positives as well. Had the opportunity to bring Representative Glenn into the district, and we toured her around the district. We showed her some of our innovative programs. She's quite knowledgeable in schools, I think having been a mother, she stayed very close to that piece of it, so I was pleased with that. We had a lot of good discussion, great opportunity for me to get in her ear a little bit one-on-one, so that was a great opportunity. I'm a part of the MASAA Super Ten Association Teacher Shortage Work Group. As I've told you before, we are working diligently on how to attract more students into education, as well as how do we retain teachers going forward. We've had some really great discussions lately, and we're in the actual doing stage now, so I think we're going to make some progress long-term going forward. Board of Education Policy, we have our Administrative Services Committee coming up with a follow-up date, a little easier one, I think, guys, this time, so we have a brief reading on that one, a smaller section, but I do think long-term we'll have to have some discussion. So as I mentioned, Lynn and Scott, I think, were the only two veteran board members, and it might have only been Lynn, who experienced switching to a policy manual versus what they had in adopting that. When I came in, they were in the middle of that process, and Carl kind of said, "Good luck," trying to figure out how to do this, and I just went, "Okay, I'm taking the easy way, we're going to adapt the whole manual, and then we'll figure out to go from there." And so that was a good way of doing it. But if we do decide to switch, I think we're going to have to consider doing it the same way again, and there could be some discomfort, but long-range, does it make sense to have the policy manual also with the most likely firm that we've been using, most districts do, that would defend you? And so I want to see what that looks like before I bring that recommendation to you, so I'll probably wait and see what it comes out in a few districts, and then we can look at it through the Administrative Services Committee and decide if that's something we should do. We've gotten used to this one. It's a little cheaper, but it does have the benefit of Truen. The other thing I've been told is what Truen's focus has been to make it a little more user-friendly. As you know, that's not the best read, and pretty lengthy, so we'll take a look at it and see what we think, anyway. Opportunity there.
Yes.
We've been preparing for the next round of bond work. We want to get out early. As you know, these contractors are very busy, we want to get the best prices, we want to be out to the markets as soon as pushing the architect and construction manager. So we think probably next month we'll have bids ready for you to come forward. Some of the bids in there, turf at stadiums do, demo Franklin and East Lawn, tennis court renewals. We only had one tennis court renewal, and it was a surfacing. When we looked at this four or five years ago, both tennis courts are in bad shape. We're probably going to try to figure out how we can do full replacements at both. Windows and doors are a big one, and so we may have to break that over a couple of years, because I don't think any single contractors could be large enough to do that in the 45 to 50 days that they would have to do so. But a lot of windows and doors at Dow, eventually a lot of windows and doors at Jefferson, if you recall, they were building that 60s.
If it's anything like what's happened in some of the other buildings, when they don't really realize until they get in there what they're going to encounter too.
Yep, yep. Building Trades and Franklin Center, so as I mentioned, it'll come down. We've been in discussion, a little bit of discussion with you as well through the couple of years about maybe the advantages of that property. The city's been very much wanting to partner with us, as they partners with Building Trades. I met with Graham Marshall, and he's going to do a little bit of architectural drawing of what that property could be. I think it's 11 or 12 lots capability. The city wouldn't be keen on making them all Building Trades homes, but maybe a mix of those, and I'll come bring back to you guys what that looks like, their district drawing, as well as I think we should educate the neighborhood over there, what's going to be there, because I think there's some uneasiness, that, hey, the building's coming down, what are they doing? I've had some people reach out to me, so we can use that drawing to kind of show them what it might look like in time, and then I'll come back to you as well, because I still believe if we make some funds off those properties, a good way of long-term sustaining Building Trades is maybe endowing it. Now, you could short-term do that, but that's a discussion for all of you as well, looking at that, but I think it's a great opportunity for us there. East Lawn will probably just leave vacant for this time. PIC meeting, we had our first PIC meeting this month, and we now display that video, we copy it, and we put it on our website. We've noticed through the years that morning meeting, lunch meeting, evening meeting, and all those parents are busy. We get about somewhere around 20, and then it dwindles a little bit through the year, and so another way of reaching out is having that video there. The topic this time was school safety, many of the things that we are doing, and the constant chase of the next, what is the next, and updating ourselves on school safety.
There was a good crowd there this time.
There was a good crowd, so hopefully it stays. Super Ten Staff Lunches, I've been doing those as I have in the past, some great topics going on, they're getting very comfortable with me, and so the discussions are even more easier and easier as we go, so really, we've talked a lot about SEL, multi-tiered systems of sports, inclusion, diversity, a lot of the work that Penny's been doing. All three of those kind of fall under Penny's school safety a little bit. People have become a little more relaxed with all the things that we're doing, feeling a little more secure about everything in the building, so that's a good thing.
Secure.
Student count, so I will tell you, I looked at them again today. This number isn't actually certified until January. We'll probably bring you a slight budget amendment prior that takes in a ballpark student count, and I'll be conservative still, but I think it looks, I'm willing to say that we're somewhere between 50 and 75 students higher than we budget it, which is a real plus for us. And then we'll show the 120, and I think we had budget 100, if I recall, and we'll make that, and it's like Brian said, I've done this before in previous districts, because I was budgeting for, we'll do a small one there, and a more detailed one in March, and a more detailed one right before the audit. So you've always had those two later ones, but we should do a new one now that we know we missed student count to the positive, and we move the FTE, the foundation allowance, positively, so we'll do that as well. So right now, student count looks good, but it's not a certified number for a while. That's it.
Very good, thank you.
I had a quick question for the, when Franklin comes down and possibly the 11 or 12 lots, is it just the speed of, there would be one a year that would go up, and then it would be a long drawn-out process with... For the reservation or the drawback or...
So the, well, yeah, I mean, we'd like to save lots so that they have the ability to build those forward. What I've heard is like a 50/50 split, but the others, we could sell or work with a builder to take that money right away. So maybe there's, the builder builds over, I don't know, a couple of years, the five or six. We build one each year, so five or six years it's filled up, if that makes sense. But I'll open the discussion if people have ideas, because this is just a brainstorm we've had.
I like it's up close to the school that it's easy to get...
They're excited about that for the Building Trades, you know, as well, so, and they struggle sometimes to find the lots, but we'll continue to try to work with Reis or Habitat or those. Now, Bill's going to retire, we're going to lose, I wrote that in there as well. We're trying to get Steve to pull up today as fast as he can learn about some of that stuff, and the city's not going to fully replace Bill, but maybe we can talk about purchasing somebody with some expertise there if we need to as well. So that model, we're trying to work out as well, because truth is, Bill has saved that program a couple of times, and so without him, it's a little bit worrisome.
I would think that when they're drawing up that neighborhood, too, that it would be in keeping with other Midland neighborhoods and having open area or park area.
Yeah, well, we've talked about, the residents have talked about park, but the city is not able to take on any more parks this time, so her budget, the number of parks she has, she's not able to, so I'm not sure where that'll go completely, but we'll work with Grant, he's a city planner, that's a good spot to start, so certainly not my expertise, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Very good. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So.
Support.
Moved by Friddell, support by Lauterbach, all in favor?
Aye.
Adjourned.